Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 7th, 2022. Can we have the roll?
Greg Strike.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Polis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Your Honor, no quin is excused. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, next up are the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Commissioner Polis, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion passes. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Polis.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes, I was absent from the January 3rd meeting, so I won't be participating in Resolution 2022-001 on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing.
Commissioner Ron.
I also was absent from the January 3rd, 2022, meeting and will be abstaining from consent agenda item related to Resolution Number 2022-001.
Thank you, Commissioner Ron. Commissioner Strike.
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for myself. Moving on to the consent agenda, then, is there a motion to approve of the resolutions Moved by Commissioner Spinelli, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion is approved. Okay, it looks like we're moving on, then, to public hearings. Before we begin, I'll read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioner, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive 5 minutes. Individuals will receive 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. And the first public hearing item on the agenda is Case 2021-0127. Can we have a report?
Thank you, commissioners. Tonight, we'll be talking about the R4A text amendment. We talked about this last month at a work session and hopefully have incorporated the changes that you suggested in the intervening time, also talked a little bit more with the public and got some more feedback. So I'll kind of go through, give an overview of what was in the original proposal and some of the changes we've made since. So the R4A zone is an existing zone, but it has been used very much in the past few years. And so the municipality is interested in making this more effective and more of an attractive zone for development to meet the needs of the plan. It's a primarily residential zone, so we really need it to implement the kind of residential piece of the 2040 land use plan. Unfortunately, this chart isn't very clear, but this kind of shows where the future land use designations can be implemented by R4A. It's basically anywhere that's urban residential high, city center, some Main Street corridors, and residential mixed-use development. So R4A is really intended for the more urban parts of the city, and it's not something that you would see in the lower-density, kind of smaller neighborhoods. Here's a map, which kind of broadly shows all the places where R4A is allowed and/or currently zoned. This map's a little bit different from what we looked at at the work session. I've included downtown because the land use designation doesn't say city center, so I kind of updated that. And I added a little bit over in the UMed district, which is identified in their plan as a high-density, mixed-use area. So the scope of the proposed changes in the initial proposal, we've updated and simplified mixed-use design standards, we've increased the floor-to-area ratio, we revised the height allowance, we actually made it a little more restrictive, but we made it a little bit simpler. So now, instead of by right to 75 feet, you can go to 60 feet, but above 60 feet, you have to step back regardless. Simplified the frontage standards, provided to increase allowances for commercial floor area, and that we've changed also since we last spoke with the commission, and added a few uses by right or via review procedures, the kind of things that people thought they would like to see in the ideal sort of urban, mixed-use environment. Just kind of a quick overview of what it looks like. Floor area ratio is 3 by right and up to 4 with conditions. Facade transparency requirements are 30% on the first three floors, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. No lot coverage requirements, no lot size minimums, no minimum setback. There's a maximum setback of 20 feet, and the height limit is 60 feet without conditions, but up to 90 feet with step backs, kind of making that ziggurat style where the building kind of slopes upward to allow a little bit more sunlight. Since the January 10th work session, we've made a few changes. One, some were cosmetic. There was a duplicated section in the code. Two, we increased the allowable non-residential to up to 49% without special processes. This came from feedback, especially from the development community, namely that the intent of this zone is to be residential. So the thinking was, well, as long as it's primarily residential, which is 51%, it's implementing the intent of the zone. We've clarified the maximum setback requirements and frontage requirements, added some clarifying language for parking lots between buildings and the street, which we'll discuss, add language that qualifies when facade improvements are required, simplified the entrance requirement, and clarified a little cosmetic thing about elevation versus height. One thing that we might talk about this evening is the transparency requirement. I just wanted to show kind of an example of what transparency, you know, being windows of doors, looks like. This right here is about 24% transparent. This here is about 20% transparent, and this is about 30% transparent. So the current rules say that you have to have this percentage of windows or doors on a facade facing a street if the street meets certain standards. And so I include these here if there needs to be a change, about the 30% or the percentage is to see kind of what 20% looks like or what 25% looks like. Again, I know it's just a render, it's not really that precise, but just to kind of give an idea of what the kind of differential might be. With that, does anybody have any questions? With that, then, I might...
Sorry, we hate to have a question here. Commissioner Krishna.
Sure. Those are substantive changes that were made since our last work session. I'm wondering if the public hearing draft that was released for public review and comment included those changes?
I'm trying to think of when the date was that we released it. I think the agency review draft went on the 29th. The public review draft that went out for this time, I'm not certain. I know that those were published for this meeting, but maybe not since to go out to all the public again in the same process.
So I see on page four of the staff packet, the public hearing draft amendment was released for agency and public review on November 29th. So does that sound right?
That was the last large packet that was released, yes. If there aren't any additional questions, we could go through some of the proposed changes if it would please the commission.
I would say, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
So starting on page 11 of 104, I'll just go through some of these, and hopefully this is clear. If not, I apologize, we can go to the document itself. This was the cosmetic change. There was just a duplicated section through the auto numbering, so we got rid of that. Moving on to page 12 of 104. This came out of discussions about more flexibility and having more commercial availability. And when we looked at it before, it was 35%. And if somebody asked, well, why 35%? Why not 36% or 40%? We didn't see a compelling reason. If the intent is to be primarily residential, then primarily residential is 51%. So that was changed. We also heard directly from developers about that, looking for more flexibility. So we did make that change to the table, Table 2104-2. Page 13 of 104. This was a long discussion. We got a lot of feedback about this, and basically it comes down to when you require a building to have transparency requirements or aesthetic requirements, it matters a lot how the building, the street that it relates to. And the comment we got was, if the municipality is requiring high-quality frontages for pedestrian activity, but the right-of-way is not quite designed for pedestrian activity, you have a bit of a conflict there. So we changed it to say, you're required to put in these frontages on streets that are... Oh, excuse me. Oh, this is the two streets. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. Previously, we were talking about standards that apply to any frontage, and we reduced this down to two-street-side frontages. So if you have a building that's facing multiple frontages, it doesn't have to apply to all of those. So you don't have to have a building fit three maximum setbacks and touch the lot on three areas. Excuse me, I jumped ahead of myself. The next one will be the parking. Okay, moving on to page 14 of 104. One of the kind of central pieces, I think, of an urban area is having buildings close to the street and trying to get away from parking between the building and the street. So we tried to simplify that and say that parking lots can't be located between buildings and near a street. We had some pushback on that, and then we had comment earlier today, which was very well-taken, that what happens if you have a pre-existing parking lot? Isn't that already covered by the non-conformity section in Chapter 13? The answer to that is, yes, it kind of is, but there's also a provision in the non-conformities that if you're redeveloping and doing a really big project, you have to bring things into compliance. So we added that unless they are pre-existing to allow a little bit of flexibility. And our recommendation is either, one, consider removing that and have it just be the non-conforming section, or remove the parking that no lots can be between the building and the street altogether, or just remove, or leave it in with a section that explicitly says this supersedes any potentially conflicting sections in the non-conformity section.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? And thanks for responding to my question earlier on that. As it's currently written, how would you understand that language to relate to the non-conformity section, both with respect to the provision you cited about the 10% and any other provisions, including, you know, prohibitions on expanding the non-conformity?
Chapter, I believe it's Chapter 2, says that when there are two conflicting provisions, the more restrictive one prevails, I believe. And so I think the way it is written, it should be changed. Even though I talked briefly with current planning, they said, the way we would interpret this is this wouldn't be a problem, but I think it's a very good point that it might need clarification, and so I agree that it probably should be clarified. Add a few more sentences and say, this supersedes that section. As for the redevelopment, I think that would still apply unless we said this supersedes the entire non-conformity section. I'll move on, and then perhaps if there are any other questions, we can address them individually. Now, on page 15 out of 104. This is a requirement that said that 30% of the first three stories of any street-facing building elevation wall shall be windows or doors providing visual access. And so we've made a change to say that 30% of the first three stories of any street-facing building elevation wall shall be windows or doors if that facade faces a street with pedestrian infrastructure and utility infrastructure built to the most current municipal standards. The thinking behind this, again, is that if you're building something and you're required to put it along a road that has a lot of traffic and noise and spray, it's just going to create that kind of environment that's not conducive to pedestrian activity. You can put on all the facade requirements in the world, but it won't make a big difference. Actually, I have an example of this. This is a development in Kirkland, Washington, and you can see here, there's kind of a private street and the public street. And I think it's fascinating because both these streets are designed with very different sets of values and priorities, right? And if you look at them, I mean, the difference is just night and day. What does this street feel like? How does it, what would it like to be there versus this street? And so the feedback we got was that if our streets looked like this, nobody would have any problems doing facade transparency, because this is the kind of place that is kind of open and friendly to pedestrians. This is not. So it's not a perfect example, because there's a bunch of transparency on this facade, and it's kind of cheating, right? Because the shade makes it look darker than it is. It's kind of not fair, but it's just the way it is. But so that's kind of the reasoning, that if all of our streets looked like this, maybe we would get more development if it looked like this. But if the streets look like this, it is kind of putting people in a difficult situation where it's going to be loud, it's going to be noisy, there's going to be spray. And we also got some comments with, which should be in the print copy that was on your desk this evening specifically regarding that. So our solution was to say that you have to have this transparency requirement if it's along a street that's developed to current standards, which means utilities are undergrounded and there's wider pedestrian sidewalks and infrastructure and that sort of thing. The 30% is kind of a compromise from what other places it had been, other places it had been, 25% or up to 50% for commercial. So that's a really simplified distillation of commercial and residential altogether. If that's something that should be changed, it might be worth discussing. The next change is page 16 out of 104, talking about entrances. It's in the same street...
Sorry, I think we've got a question from Commissioner Ron on that last item before we move on. That's okay. So go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Appreciate the context you provided around glazing. Multi-part question coming at you. The first one is 30%. The way I read it is that it's fixed. It's not minimum, it's not maximum, it's 30% on the dot. Is that intention, or am I reading it too literally?
No, that's it. It used to be a certain percentage for residential and a certain percentage for commercial, and a certain percentage based on if it was on this frontage, and a certain percentage if it was based on this frontage. And this is simplified down to 30.
Okay, so I may be, again, interpreting this too literally, but if I'm a developer and I put 35% glazing, am I then in violation of the ordinance? That's the intent of my question.
That's a great question. I think it wouldn't be interpreted that way, but you're correct that it should be clear.
With respect to the additions made, I can appreciate the comments. I believe they're attributed to the development community. I understand there's a cost associated with maintaining glazing when street spray is an issue. At its face, to me, that's the cost of owning and maintaining a building. And I'm struggling to, you know, back off on that at the expense of some of the objectives that I believe this is intended to create. I do appreciate the Kirkland example you've provided with respect to the standard city streetscape that you're showing us. I would argue there's still value in having that glazing in terms of the activity that occurs for those pedestrians that are on the street and the openness that that does provide and create. So to me, it's an example of, are we backing off on something just because the infrastructure hasn't caught up yet? And if that's the approach that we're taking, then what are we doing to push that infrastructure to, in fact, catch up?
Yeah, that, I mean, we're facing a trade-off here, right? And there are two goals right in front of me. One's remove barriers to desired infill development; the other is promote the development of a Main Street transit-oriented, mixed-use, walkable place, right? And it's tough, because how do you do that? And not to mention that you have almost two different sets of regulations at play here, because planning extends, it's all the private land, it's all the private, excuse me, land use. Once it gets to the right-of-way, it's a whole different set of values and a whole different set of priorities, which goes against, goes, kind of, infrastructure investment plays out there according to a different set of plans often. There is more and more overlap. This really came down to, at the work session, there was a lot of talk about if there wasn't support from the development community, that this didn't seem likely to go through. So we really thought, well, we need to make this so it's an attractive zone for development. And on that point, yeah, it is a trade-off, but it's also putting pressure in a different place. It's saying that, so if you want nice streets, you have to design nice streets, and also that a building can only do so much to make something walkable, but if, at the end of the day, somebody feels safe or unsafe, or, you know, it's loud walking next to the building, all the glazing in the world might not make a huge difference. Not that, I don't, you know, personally love environments like that and love buildings like that, but this is really a tough trade-off between those two things. And another piece, kind of thinking bigger about this example, or potentially this example, is do buildings turn their back on the street? And this project, they did. I mean, they just said, this street is so uninteresting to us that we are going to actually create our own street separate. And I've heard similar concerns from the development community here. Personally, as a planner, I don't want to give up on the right-of-way. Right-of-way is public space, and I think it's very important to build that public realm. But at the same time, if this is out of your control, it's hard to blame somebody for wanting to create this on their own terms rather than having to deal with this and add that cost over here. So the issue is never, at least in talking, and we're talking to Mr. J.J. Brooks about, and he provided his comments, is he said, he wants to do transparency and he wants to create this pedestrian vibrant place, he just doesn't want it to be external-facing, which, yeah, it is, it's a big trade-off, and it's problematic. We put this in kind of with that idea that we're trying to make this zone usable and popular for use and functional. So that was kind of the trade-off, and there are different pieces of the plan that support either way, either side of it. Yes, thanks. I'll move on to, okay, page 16 of 104. So this is talking about street-facing entrance, and it used to say, "street-facing primary entrance," and we changed that to "a street-facing entrance." This is another compromise between, does the building turn its back on the street or does it still provide some access? I agree. I mean, most buildings, buildings can last 20 to 40 years, so the way we build them today will influence things over time, and we have to balance the future infrastructure investments with the building investment. So this was something that seems very important to have an entrance on the street, but the primary entrance has a little bit more associated with it. So it was kind of a trade-off between, okay, the building has to have something focusing on the primary, on the Main Street, but it doesn't have to be the primary entrance. Move to page 17. This was really a cosmetic piece. It said, in the old codes, that buildings in the R4A district may reach a total height of 90 feet at elevations above 60 feet, just because elevation can have a different meaning, sort of in architectural terms. We changed it to say, "for buildings taller than 60 feet, all floor area shall be residential uses, and the building facade shall be stepped back one foot for every two feet of rise." So those are the changes, and I want to make sure that I address the comments that came in earlier today. Let's see, we were talking about, oh, "determined otherwise by the director." Yeah. So a comment came in earlier today talking about, there's language says, "unless determined otherwise by the director," and the question is, what are the standards for how the director makes that decision? So I think the first easy answer is that it should always pretty much conform to the 2040 LUP, the land use plan. But in practice, there isn't any really written criteria, but in general, changes occur, the director will make a discretionary call when the standard can't be accommodated because of some physical constraint that exists. So that is building some flexibility. It could be removed, or there could be standards added or to be left in.
Because I've got two quick questions, one with respect to the standards question for the director's determination. I think your comment in the email you sent out earlier today referred to, with respect to whether it is easier just to rely on the variance process, that there's more, that is more involved, and you're trying to get away from that. Is, practically speaking, I guess this is a two-part question. Is there, do you see an issue or concern with just pointing to those variance standards for what the director should look at? And then also, do you know if there are other? I did a quick search for other portions of the code that have similar language that just kind of refers generally to, unless the director determines otherwise. And I think I found one other narrow provision, so it doesn't seem like it's a common thing in the code. And I'm just curious for what your understanding is of how often that comes up, where there's something where, you know, the director makes a determination in an open-ended sense like that.
I'll answer the second question first. I don't have enough experience, and I haven't done enough cases to know how often it comes up. I should have brought more examples. Off the top of my head, I know, for example, and this isn't in planning, but with a traffic engineer, for example, they often can make a determination, or it'll say, "you have to provide this unless the director and the traffic engineer say that." So I'd have to provide more. Talking to current planning, I don't think it occurs that often, just because there usually aren't many physical constraints. That was what they really focused on. To the point about the variance, I think the issue would be, if you line up the director discretion to look like the variance, then the question becomes, well, why don't I just have a variance? And people might say, well, I'd like to be involved in that, too, and if it's kind of like a variance, maybe they should anyway. And I guess the main issue is where it says director discretion, is the chance of discretion so large that it could potentially really change the nature of the project or the development? And if it is, then maybe it should go to be a variance. But if not, you know, I think the things that I saw is, a lot of times, it's maybe a setback or something that doesn't make a huge difference in the shape or the feel of the project.
I guess seeing no one else in the queue, I'll ask another question with respect to the proposed change on page 15 that we were speaking about earlier. I'm just, one potential that I could see, and I'm curious what your sense is, and also if there's anyone on the commission who has experience on this, is that the 30% requirement is in place if the facade faces a street with pedestrian infrastructure and utility infrastructure built to the most current municipal standards. And is, I understand that to be that if, you know, there's some tweak to the applicable standards, and so there's a street that was consistent with both infrastructure and pedestrian and utility infrastructure standards, but, you know, there's some change, and it no longer is consistent with most current, that that 30% requirement would no longer apply to that street? And I guess, as an initial question to determine if that's the intent or the understanding of the planning department? And then, as a follow-up, kind of how much of an issue that might be, or how common that might be the case? I don't, you know, you just pick a random street out here, I don't know how often those standards change.
Yeah, as written, the rule exists only in those, in that specific situation. So presumably, somebody could build something that didn't have any windows or have any doors. And to the second question, was it, how often does that happen, that there's a difference between? Actually, could you repeat the second question?
Yeah, no. Yeah, my question is that, I understand the intent of this Yeah, no, yeah, my question is that, I understand the intent of this amendment, to say, okay, we want to have the 30%, but it doesn't make sense to do it if it's a street that's not really a pedestrian street. And so that's what this limitation is, is that if, the 30% is required if it faces a street with pedestrian infrastructure and utility infrastructure built to the most current municipal standards. And so my question is, if we pick a, if we pick a street in the city, how many of them are built to the most current municipal standards? And I don't know what frequency those standards change. In other words, I don't know if this exclusion is kind of broader than we intend, or maybe it's not.
Yeah, I think, I think the general, the most current standards, the sidewalk is a little wider, maybe goes from five to eight, the landscaping strip's a little wider, and the utilities are undergrounded. But yeah, it is, it is kind of a harsh position, it's saying all or nothing. The alternative is to say, just to get a little bit more granular, right? And say, in this scenario, it should look like this, in this scenario, it should look like this. We didn't go down that route, just thinking about, kind of weighing the difficulty of complying with that, with what we're actually trying to get out of it. And so, yeah, and as to how many roads are built to the most current standards, I don't know, but I, I think there are a lot of roads that could be improved, I guess I would say. I don't have a precise number, so I shouldn't say, but, sorry about that.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. So Mr. Sher, if I understood the first part of your question, I think, if I'm capturing it, is, are we setting ourselves up such that if the municipal standards for infrastructure, both sidewalks and utilities, were to have a minor change, then something that was previously to standard is no longer to the most current standard? That, I think, is the concern that I garnered from the chair. If not, then it's one that I'll put forward in terms of how the phrasing could be interpreted. With respect to the status of circumstances where this could come into play, I think one of the development comments was around 36th and Arctic, perhaps Olympic Park, and the claim was around overhead utilities, not undergrounded, perhaps impeding pedestrian flow, being at the right of way, very close to the side of the building, and that creating a circumstance where it's maybe less than walkable, or ideally walkable. So that might be one example for us to think about. I would put forward that we should place emphasis on making things as walkable as possible, and enabling safe and inviting pedestrian access. And to me, the way in which a building faces a street and the sidewalk is definitely one important component of that. Thinking about the glazing itself, and coming at it from a different angle, is the 30%, is that reflected elsewhere in code? Is that a, is that a standard? Is there an energy efficiency element that we're maybe stepping on that we should be wary about?
No, that number, originally, it was, it was kind of between 50 and 20, and we went down to 30, because it was 50, I believe, for commercial, and then 20 for residential. I think R4 has maybe 25%, and then in some of the other zones, they have maybe 20%. So it is a bit higher. I don't, I don't think, I don't have a number for if this is energy efficient or not, but again, that 30% transparency is, anything is up for change at this point, whatever makes sense. And it's also difficult, I mean, how do you balance, like, 20 versus 30, or 20 versus 25? That was kind of bringing it down and simplifying it. It's slightly higher than in other places, trying to get to that urban environment where you have a lot of windows along the street, and looking at models and saying, okay, this seems about right. And in the comments we heard from development, 30% never came up as a problem. That doesn't mean it isn't, couldn't be problematic, but really, if there's any other feedback or any reason to change it, there's no reason not to, so.
Commissioner Spinelli.
I'm giving up my speaking.
Okay, seeing no other questions in the queue at the moment, I guess we'll move to what will likely be a very brief bit of testimony from the public. So we'll open the hearing for public testimony, and... There's no one present in the chambers to provide testimony, and there's no one on the line to provide testimony. So you have an opportunity for rebuttal, if you would like to take any time.
I'm glad to answer any other questions or provide any additional details. Just in thinking about how we got to this point, at the last meeting or at the work session, there were some concerns about the dwelling units per acre and the flexibility and hearing from developers, so that kind of informed the way we went forward. I could speak to, one thing that came up was the 20 dwelling units per acre, which were required. Currently, in code, the R4A purpose statement says they're really aiming for 35 dwelling units per acre. So a lot of what we did with the zone, I know it still seems complicated, was actually reduce it for the most part, some things got a little bit more stringent. But if there are any other comments or suggestions or questions, I'd be glad to answer them or provide any additional detail.
Do you have Commissioner Ron in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. Sher, and this is to a fellow commissioner who previously questioned the public process and notice. And if I could turn the floor back over to that commissioner, any follow-up comments as to continued concern or lack thereof in terms of the amendments, the amendments that we now have before, have before us?
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you, I appreciate the comment from Commissioner Ron. This continues to be a concern for me. I just want to ask again and make sure I'm understanding that since the work session in January, that I see in the packet that some of the proposed changes were shared with developers, but if I'm to understand, community councils and members of the public haven't had a chance to see the changes in this packet, which include by right, commercial uses going from 35% to 49%, and the other items in here. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We had the work session, and then we went back to kind of address those questions, and I think since then, it hasn't gone out again in the same process. And that's, I'm new to the process, and that's my ignorance of how it works, but I think you are correct.
Thank you. I think I would just add as a comment to the commission that I don't believe that I could support this motion, or the, this proposal right now. I do believe it should go back out to public hearing, because these are substantial content changes that could have significant impacts on the ground.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Krishna, for your comment. I guess with that, I will go ahead and say that the public hearing is closed, and we're now at a position where the commission is free to provide motions with respect to this pending case.
Commissioner Ron.
Not looking to make a motion yet, but just a point of clarification request, I guess. Did we have the opportunity to keep the public hearing open? Obviously, it is now, now closed, so maybe it's a moot point, but I was thinking, one of our potential outcomes would have been to just keep the public hearing open, to recirculate the amendments, the amendments, and then come back forward. Maybe that's a question of Lori and staff. I share Commissioner Krishna's concerns, and would like to know what potential remedies we might now have if we don't act on this tonight.
So, my apologies, I had maybe moved too soon, I think I was thinking a different line, but it is an option to reopen the public hearing, which I think... Yeah, it is possible, the public hearing. So maybe, I don't know, for staff or Commissioner Ron, if you could give some more explanation as to what process you maybe were envisioning with respect to next steps, if we were to reopen the public hearing?
I think we could send it out again to all the community councils, if that's the general avenue, or however directed, basically. This is just to create the zone, it doesn't establish any zone. If this was, if somebody was going to rezone, they'd have to go through the rezone process to do this. So this is just saying, these are the parameters that could be accepted if, for existing R4A, or if there's any, right now, I think there's only three or four acres of R4A in the municipality. So we could send it out to community councils, or unless, is there a broader need to, is the commission looking to primarily for feedback from one group, or from the entire community, or?
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you to the chair, appreciate staff's willingness to continue to engage the public. I'm not asking that we, you know, provide another bite at the apple, per se, in terms of the, you know, entire breadth of what we have before us, but do have some concern, as expressed by Commissioner Krishna, that the amendments that we now have before us being not fully communicated through the public process. And I would like to see that happen, that these, as they're described substantive amendments be, I'm not sure if a new notice is necessary, or how that, practically speaking, takes But for that window to be provided, and then for us to move on it.
So we, as I noted, we can reopen the public hearing, and we could also postpone ruling on this motion until whatever time, as the commission decides, and, you know, can include a request for certain further procedures as part of that postponement before we hear the case again.
So I don't, what would the difference in outcome be if we were to reopen versus not reopen the public hearing? My intent is that the public has an opportunity to comment, and that we get to receive those comments.
I think reopening would be the fullest way to ensure that we have full comments from the public, if that were the intent.
Then I'll put a motion on the table that we reopen public hearing for case 2021-0127, such that the public has an opportunity to review and comment on the amendments put forward to us tonight. Lori, do I need a date certain, or?
So I, I think, Commissioner Ron, if you're seeking clarification, so we can reopen the hearing, and then the motion would also include a postponement of the decision on this case. And you could include a date certain, or you could include a request for some further procedure that the staff would make before they bring the case back before us.
Okay. So moved to reopen public hearing and postpone action this evening, request that planning department provide the commission best available timing for it, to come back before the commission.
And I think, I'd like, curious to hear staff's perspective, I think they probably would value some instructions as to what additional process should occur before they bring it back before us. And I've got Commissioner Krishna in the queue to comment, if you would...
If Commissioner Krishna would like to take over from here, I'd be more than happy.
I sure wouldn't. I think to the, I'll speak to the question about the public process, and I think I would just, I would just ask that this department's standard process for making items that the commission is, you know, considering available to the public, I understand that's through community councils, it may be through other groups as well, I can't speak to that, but I would request that the standard process be used for public hearing drafts, however those are sent out.
Okay, so we still have room for a motion, Commissioner Ron, if you would like to offer one up again, or anybody else?
Commissioner Spinelli.
I will make the motion that we postpone this case, with the intent of reopening public hearing at a future date. I think the commission desires for staff to re-notice the public and see if we can gain any other comment.
That motion is seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I wasn't, I'm, I'm not 100% sure that I really feel that this motion is necessary, but the commission seemed to be moving in that direction, and I was just trying to expedite it. And I'll just make a couple of comments with regards to that, is that typically, what I think of R4A, I'm thinking of B3 areas that are moving to R4A, and this code is so much more protective than what these properties were probably prior to, that I think that it would be a welcome change from the community, and that's probably why we didn't see, you know, a ton of community feedback on stuff like this. But either way, it's fine by me to go along and support the motion.
Commissioner Krishna.
Thank you. I have a few comments. The first one is, at our work session, we had asked staff to engage the development community about this ordinance, and I just want to thank staff for doing that. I saw really helpful comments and feedback from the development community in our packet this time, and really appreciate that. My concern is not so much with the content of the amendments, I think, in general, they strengthen the, these, this ordinance that we have in front of us, or these amendments. I think I do, would support this motion, I obviously do support this motion, and that is primarily because I see in the department's correspondence with some of the developers that these amendments were already shared, and I want to make sure that all members of the public have equal access to review and see these amendments before tonight. I don't believe that was the case right now. And I do feel strongly that some of the changes that were proposed primarily, especially about the by right allowable commercial use, I noticed that that also takes away the major site plan review, conditional use, or SAE, that was originally proposed for commercial uses between 36 to 50%. So I would say overall that the public will have slightly less chance to participate if just a rezone is pursued after this is voted on, and for those reasons, I will be supporting this motion.
I'll just note briefly, I intend to support the motion as well, and I would just ask if, of staff, when the case comes back before us, if the motion passes, if some of the other discussion we had this evening with respect to some of the proposed amendments could be considered, and if staff would like to make any changes in light of that discussion to include that when it comes back before us. Okay, I don't see any further comments pending, so we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Strike?
Mr. Strike?
Yep.
Thank you.
And that motion passes. Okay, that's the last item on our agenda, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just briefly-
Apologies, Commissioner Ron.
I promise not to extend too long, but I did want to have just some brief, perhaps, commissioners' comments around the reminder of Robert's rules that were, were sent out, and how we operate as a board. I did notice the commissioner handed off his gavel per that process. I'm of the mind that if it isn't broken, what do we need to fix, and think that we have operated pretty well as commissioners, understanding that we, you know, do need to have a basis and adherence to certain, certain rules of order. I would put forward that the ability for the chair to engage in debate is instructive and helpful, and would not seek to limit that moving, moving forward. That said, I'm open to other commissioners' comments as, as to that point, or, or others.
I guess I would just note, I don't feel that with the recommendations that we receive from the municipality, that my ability to participate is unduly limited, so I guess to say it's, "Don't fix what's not broken," I don't, I don't, I don't see a fix that has been proposed as actually breaking anything itself, so.
Fair enough. Let's carry on our wayward sons and daughters, and adjourn, move to adjourn.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Ron, and seconded, I see some various, there you go, Commissioner Krishna. Thank you.